Recording in progress.
Good morning. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Tuesday, July 8th, meeting of the St. Joseph County Board of Commissioners. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda today is the approval of the Accounts Payable docket. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Backsmyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I didn't see anybody sign up to speak on an agenda item this morning, so we'll move on to the approval of the agency agreement. I could talk about that. This is an agreement between the Board of Commissioners and David St. Clair. Pertains to an investigation, possible relocation of the county offices to another building. There's no fee associated with this. It's simply to explore an option. The option being go somewhere else and not renovate this building, or in the long term, if that doesn't work, having to spend considerable amount of money on renovating this building. But we don't know what the options are, and that's the purpose of this agreement. Gentlemen, any questions from either of you? If not, do we have a motion to approve the buyer-agency agreement with David St. Clair?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Backsmyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, approval of Resolution R-13-C 2025, the Goodwill Industries of Michiana's Veteran Resource Network, St. Joseph County Veterans Stand Down Day.
Resolution R-13-C-2025, a resolution of the St. Joseph County Board of Commissioners honoring Goodwill Industries of Michiana's Veterans Resource Network for the St. Joseph County Veterans Stand Down Day. Whereas the St. Joseph County Board of Commissioners represent all the citizens of St. Joseph County, Indiana, and periodically recognize people who by their dedication and hard work have presented themselves as memorable and inspirational in our community, and whereas the freedoms we enjoy as Americans have been valiantly defended by the courageous men and women who served in the United States Armed Forces, and whereas many of our nation's veterans continue to face challenges as they reintegrate into civilian life, including access to housing, healthcare, employment, and support services, and whereas Goodwill Industries of Michiana's Veterans Resource Network has demonstrated an unwavering commitment to honoring and supporting our veterans and service members regardless of branch, time of service, or discharge status, and whereas the St. Joe County Stand Down Event taking place this Saturday, July 12th, 2025, at the Century Center here in South Bend exemplifies the spirit of community support by bringing together service providers, organizations, and volunteers to offer vital resources in a safe and welcoming environment, and whereas the Stand Down draws inspiration from the military tradition of stand down from combat to rest and recover, and provides a broad range of essential services, including medical care, housing assistance, employment resources, legal aid, and peer support, and whereas this event presents the power of partnership with Goodwill Industries of Michiana collaborating across Elkhart, Cosiasko, LaPorte, Marshall, Porter, and St. Joe County to meet the needs of veterans and their families, including those experiencing homelessness or financial hardship. Now therefore be it resolved by the St. Joseph County Board of Commissioners and on behalf of the citizens of St. Joseph County, Indiana, honorably and publicly recognize Goodwill Industries of Michiana's Veteran Resource Network for their outstanding dedication to our military veterans and proclaim July 12th, 2025, as Goodwill Industries of Michiana's Veteran Resources Network Stand Down Day in St. Joe County, Indiana. The St. Joseph County Board of Commissioners encourages all residents to honor the service of our veterans by supporting efforts that provide them with the care, dignity, and resources they have earned.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing that to our attention and that give us the opportunity to recognize the work that Goodwill does. Reverend Lee, Kenneth Lee is the director.
Yes.
And does a good job.
This will be a great event on Saturday. Look forward to being there.
Me too. There being no further comments, do we have a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Backsmyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, moving on to IPG, approval of the GIS pictometry data sharing agreement with MACOG for the Spring 2025 aerial photography.
Good morning. Bill Shalio, Economic Development Director with part of Department of Infrastructure, Planning, and Growth with offices on 7th and 11th floor. Before you today is a GIS pictometry data sharing agreement between MACOG, Board of Commissioners, and the 911 Center, PSAP, that creates a funding source for the new spring 2025 aerial photography that was taken for St. Joseph County. This is the fourth agreement approved for the service dating back to 2019. The way the process works is MACOG coordinates the aerial photography. PSAP and Board of Commissioners typically have split the cost for moving this contract forward. The total cost for the flight from the county side of things is $51,959. Generally, that cost is split between PSAP and MACOG and split over two years for a payment. So what we're asking for you to do today is approve this contract so we can make the payment and then be set for 2026. You will see a contract in the future for the next three years of flights, so it would probably be '27, '29, and '31. Generally, MACOG is able to lock in a contract price for future flights. So if there's any questions about this, I would be happy to answer it.
Bill, why don't you elaborate a little bit on the value of this and what we get for this?
Yeah, so we've been doing GIS in St. Joseph County, or as a function, St. Joseph County since about 1999. Our first set of aerials that were done as part of these kind of contracts, I think were first flown in 2001, and then every two years we do update photography. We have on our GIS hub not only the aerial photography we've flown, but we have aerial photography that goes all the way back to, I think, 1935 for the entire county. Obviously, not the same quality of photography we have today from '35, but certainly a great resource, not only internally but externally facing. All the aerial photography is shared on the hub, so it's available to the community for, you know, historical purposes or research purposes, things like that. But again, as part of the work that we do here, this is, this contract is just for the photography. There's also a separate contract when they fly every two years. They also do a scan of all the structures, and so there'll be a separate contract that will be done for all the structures. So every two years, we get a structure layer update. So all the new garages, buildings, sheds, parking garages, shopping malls, data centers, anything that's done that gets rendered into the GIS gets updated every two years. That's not only additions, but also subtractions. So that dataset is paid for by the assessor's office, so they're able to track comings and goings of buildings. So as they're doing their modeling every year and their research, they're able to track what gets built, what gets removed, to make sure the tax records are, you know, current and proper. So again, this is a great resource for us. These photos have been flown, they've been rolled into the system already. There was a thought that this contract had been circulated. It turned out it had not been circulated, so this is kind of a cleanup issue at this point, so.
And the value of this is, is great to the community.
Certainly.
Internally.
Yep. We use it for all sorts of things, presentations, obviously, daily work. We share this photography with all the local engineering firms when they're doing planning projects or engineering projects for us. So this, it's certainly not a tool that just stays in-house, it gets shared throughout the community, so it really has a community value.
1935.
Yeah, I don't know if that was in a balloon or how that was taken, but...
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask you.
I wasn't there, I don't know.
Was that flight done by the Wright Brothers, or?
I think maybe Amelia Earhart before she got lost, so that's why not the whole county's in the picture, just most of it, so.
Okay.
Or Snoopy with a Brownie camera hanging out of the software's camel, you know?
It's pretty impressive, Bill.
It was either that or Dan Caruso stood up with a camera and took a picture because he's so tall, so, you know. Maybe Carl stood on Dan's shoulders and they took the pictures, I don't know, so.
All kidding aside, I appreciate that differentiation as far as the structures and everything else. That, I appreciate that. That's very valuable information.
Oh, it's huge, yeah. Absolutely great toolset for us.
Without a doubt.
And the fact, the way they take the photographs, they overlap, and where they overlap, you can get a three-dimensional view of that.
Yeah, through our pictometry, yeah, through the Eagle View pictometry program, we not only have straight-on aerial photography, but we also have oblique photography that gets updated every two years, so that's a huge toolset for us, too.
That's good. Well, having explored that, do we have a motion to approve the GIS pictometry data sharing agreement?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Backsmyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, moving on to approval of various items for the Highway Department, starting with the bid award for the material of bituminous patching.
Yep, good morning. Adam Villa, Department of Infrastructure, Planning, and Growth with offices on the 7th and 11th floor. We receive bids for annual highway material. We have the individual bid packages here listed, and after review, I am here today for award recommendation. Starting off with bituminous patching, due to the number of line items and locations that these items, that the material can be ordered for, the award recommendation for annual materials is usually that we will recommend award be given to any of the bidders with a complete bid, and then ordering material would be based off of pricing and availability. So we would like to continue that, and the award for recommendation for each of these will be the same, so I can go through each individually if we would like.
Just for clarity, we award you, in the past, we've awarded all of them, and you start...
Any bid received that is found to be complete, we would award to each, and then we order based off of lowest price and availability at the time. So if the first supplier cannot get the material to us within a timely manner, we would move to the second lowest bidder and third lowest bidder and so on, and that is for each individual item in each of these bid packages.
Comments?
I would suggest that we just award each one of these individually.
Okay.
And so do we have a motion to approve the bid award for the highway material of bituminous patching?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Backsmyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next is the material of liquid bituminous material. A motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Backsmyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Material, next is the material of miscellaneous aggregates.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Backsmyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And next is material of traffic, paint, and signage.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Backsmyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Before we go on to item F, material of fuel, oil, lubricants, and miscellaneous materials, I understand we're waiting for some additional information?
Yes, I've reviewed those bids at the request of IPG and asked that those be tabled to work out.
Next week, we would assume?
We will, after a little bit of further review, we will have that ready for next week's meeting then for award recommendation.
I know there was a lot to go through on all of these to tabulate, and not an easy job. Good time for Sky to take off.
Yes.
Gentlemen, do we have a motion to table the bid award for material of fuel, oil, lubricants, and miscellaneous materials?
Motion to table.
Second.
We have a motion, Mr. Hazen? Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Backsmyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thanks, Adam.
Thank you.
Next, approval of the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Backsmyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, moving on to our Health Department, approval of the application request for the Jewish Women's Endowment Fund grant.
Good morning. I'm Ashley Hellman, the Director of Nursing at the St. Joseph County Department of Health. We're on the 8th, 9th floors and in the law building. We're here this morning seeking approval to apply for a grant to support our Community Partner Program, and I know a lot of you guys are already familiar with that program, but I'd like to give a brief overview. This program was created to connect schools with the items that were most often identified as keeping children out of the classroom and in the nurse's office, and they fall into four broad categories: clothing, hygiene items, feminine hygiene items, and food. We receive items directly, and they go to schools. With over 100 schools in our county, there's a high level of need, and individual donations are the backbone of the program. However, money received through grants and donations does allow schools to request products that we may not have received as a donation or may be out of stock. Over the last year, we've worked with our generous community, accepting those individual donations, as well as a monetary donation from a local foundation, and two weeks ago, we got to celebrate the program's successful first year. We had school health staff, superintendents, students, donors. It was just a really great moment. This year, 84 schools participated in the program, and almost 300 hours of instructional time were reported as saved through the use of the supplies, and we're excited to continue the program next year and increase both the number of schools utilizing the program and the amount of time that, classroom time that's reclaimed. Today, we're requesting approval to apply for a grant from the Jewish Federation of St. Joseph Valley's Endowment Fund, and this foundation specifically works to improve the lives of women and children, and we believe that our partnership program resonates with that mission. The grants are awarded between $500 and $2,500, and if approved, we plan to apply for a $2,500 award. If you have any questions, either myself or our school health liaison, Kayla Monish, would be happy to answer them.
I guess I'm surprised to hear 84 schools participate in this program?
Yes.
That's throughout?
Throughout St. Joe County.
Okay.
So we have 102 schools, and that is public, private, parochial, all types.
Okay, that was my next question. Okay, okay, that's fantastic.
Yes.
That is, that is outstanding.
Thank you. There was a lot of hard work on Kayla's part.
Wow. So you're saying this was the first, first year for this?
First full year of the program, yes.
And obviously, you're saying it was very successful.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I mean, those, you know, these things just don't happen, you know what I mean? So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Kayla, thank you for your hard work throughout the year on this. Didn't realize there were that many. I should, having worked in educational planning and design, I didn't realize there were that many in St. Joe County total.
Yes, we have quite a few, and the number is always changing, so new schools come on board and other ones, so it's an important role.
Commissioners, any other comments or questions?
I have one, because how do the schools know about this program? Have you sent something out?
Yes, so we communicate with the schools in multiple ways. We do in-person visits, we do phone calls, emails. There is a monthly email to all the schools, just with updates about everything that's going on, not just this program. Schools reach back out to us with questions, health-related questions. So the, the school health liaison does a lot of different things. We also work with the school administrators, so sometimes schools don't have a health person in-house. It might be the secretary or the principal who is taking care of kiddos when they come in, so whoever in the school is in charge of that, that's who we're in contact with, because we want to make sure that everybody knows that we're here as a resource and that we're willing to do whatever we can to support students and schools in making sure that kids are in the classroom.
I take it no schools ever get turned down, if they need it, they need it.
Yeah, yes, correct. And what we were able to do with our donation last year was to let every school have an amount of money to be able to order the supplies they most needed, and then with our individual donations, if a school asks for it, we, and we have it, we give it to them immediately. If we don't, then they go on a wait list.
So these individual donors, are they corporations, local companies, just individuals?
Local individuals, yes. We have been lucky enough to have had a little bit of media coverage about the program, so people were able to hear about it that way, and then we promote it on our social media. There's a wonderful video about the program that was shared, and we get donations from people in this building. We have an Amazon wishlist, so people can just order something from that and have it shipped here, or people can, will do donation drives where they might collect clothes or hygiene items or whatnot, and then we take those directly.
Gentlemen, if there are no further questions or comments, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, three times over.
Motion and second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Backsmyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, Physical Assets, approval of Amendment Number One for the Archives Elevator Bid with Schindler Elevator Corporation.
Good morning, Commissioners. Bree Roberts, Director of Physical Assets, offices on the 7th floor. And so this is, as you mentioned, in regards to the Archives Elevator Bid that we set out and awarded to Schindler Elevator. Within that bid, there were certain specifications, including statement of work that they agreed to under this bid, one of those items being the timeline. We did include in the bid a pretty aggressive timeline, given original estimates. Unfortunately, I think the, the state of importing goods and things like that have changed pretty rapidly lately, and so as mentioned in the cover letter, the manufacturer of the elevator that we're looking at is P-Flo, and they have mentioned that the date mentioned in the contract for this work is basically not possible due to the current lead times. And so once the order is placed for the hardware, the lead time would be two to three weeks for job-specific drawings, and then once the drawings are approved, it would be another eight to 10 weeks for manufacturing of the unit itself. And then we still have to have it shipped here and fully installed by Schindler, and so given that information directly from the manufacturer, I think it makes sense to increase the timeline on this project, especially given that Schindler is the only bidder, and they are willing to work with us on this, and so we would ask for your approval as outlined.
Again, this is just a timeline change, it doesn't change the cost.
Correct.
Gentlemen, any questions for Bree regarding the Amendment Number One for the Archives Elevator Bid? If not, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Backsmyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, approval of the Cooperative Contract with Omnia Partners for Office Supplies and Services.
And so this one is a cooperative contract through Omnia Partners that we have utilized for many years in the past. So essentially, Omnia Partners allows for other governmental agencies to upload their contracts onto a partnership website, of which our Department of Procurement is a member, and so we have the opportunity to look through those contracts and as another governmental entity, piggyback or co-utilize those agreements, if you will. And so this one is awarded for Office Supplies and Services, and it was originally awarded to AOPD. Our local division of AOPD is Office 360, who is office supply vendor that we've utilized for a long time. The contract number is 158057 through solicitation 24-S844, which was Region 14 Educational Service Center in Abilene, Texas. And so we get a number of discounts, as you can see in the attachment, on a lot of different items through just piggybacking off this contract. And as I mentioned in the cover letter as well, this is not exclusive, so we will continue to gain competitive pricing for every office supply order that comes in for the different departments, as we always do, but this just allows us a little bit more advantageous pricing on this list of products, and we would ask for your approval.
Bree, I just want to say, we've talked about this, obviously, before today, and I just want to commend you for going, from my perspective, the extra mile, even though you're getting a discount through this contract, but continuing to look for better deals, if you will, that are, that may be out there, so thank you for that.
Absolutely.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Backsmyer?
Aye.
Thank you.
There being no other agenda items, we will move on to public comment. Who wishes to speak?
I don't know, I don't know whether this is appropriate for this time slot or the public comments, but I wasn't even intending to be here today, but seeing that we do not have our monthly Michiana Military Support Network that meets at the same time every Tuesday, 11:15 at Ivy Tech. Being that there was this resolution here today in regard to goodwill and Michiana Military Stand Down, I'm glad that there was recognition. One person I would like to have entered into the public record is a lady by the name of Jill Powers that represents all of these military stand downs throughout the area, and so I thought I'd share that with you. I also will be at the Michiana Military Stand Down on Saturday with my own booth, representing St. Joe County Veterans, Court, and additionally, self-healing communities is a growing thing in this county. So I just wanted to commend the resolution, okay, because I thought it was well-served. Thank you.
Before you leave, I don't believe you, we know...
Oh, I'm sorry, Tom.
Give us your name and...
Yeah. Tom Rowe, 26160 Lakeland, South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service, sir.
Morning Commissioners. Dan Caruso, New Carlyle. Mr. Shalio, he's gone now. Actually, I had trained a... I had trained a flock of turkey vultures to fly over the county. And the sketchy areas is where there were bald eagles and golden eagles and red-tailed hawks, enemies of the turkey vultures. So they were hesitant to fly there and take pictures. I, I spoke this morning at the RDC meeting. I spoke yesterday at the Drainage Board meeting. I'm going to say this, basically the same thing to you that I've said to them, and I'm going to say from now into the, as far into the future as necessary. New Carlyle and all of Township have contributed greatly to economic development in St. Joseph County with our agricultural land being converted to industry. And it is totally, it has changed the lifestyle we have over there. I lived in New Carlyle and worked in Mishawaka and drove that every day, simply because I didn't want to live in the city and I liked the country rural area in New Carlyle, which is now being transformed into an industrial zone. We can, we can cope with that. I heard Mr. Shalio speak this morning about planning for further spread of the Amazon campus. Sounds like a school to me, but it's spreading and spreading. I told them, I've telling, I'm telling everybody going forward, the way to stop this is with the elected bodies here, where the vote on rezonings, the APC, the, the county council, I believe the commissioners are involved, the redevelopment commission is involved with, with moving these things forward. No more rezoning of agricultural property to industrial in all of Township and New Carlyle. It's time to stop the industrial sprawl. We've made our contribution to the, to the county, where we've pushed along the economic development plan. It's time to get somebody else to contribute. Leave what we've got left alone. No more rezoning to industrial in all of Township and New Carlyle. Thank you.
Anyone else in the room wish to offer a public comment? If not, we'll move to those online. Cheryl, I saw your hand move and, yep.
Good morning, Cheryl Nix. Yes, thank you. Cheryl Nix, 17901 Saber Ridge Drive, Clay Township. I wanted to start to talk about how impressed I am with the Health Department and this project that they have going on with the schools. As many of you know, I was a teacher in the South Bend School Corporation for 35 years, and I can verify that hygiene, clothing, menstrual products are often reasons that students miss school, need to leave the classroom and head to the nurse's office. So what an impressive project, and I'm looking forward to making a contribution myself. So I'm going to go to the Health Department's website and find out what I can do. So congratulations to them and thank you for giving them this opportunity to apply for another grant. I also want to piggyback off of Dan Caruso's comments. I have not spoken the last couple of weeks, and I wanted to state emphatically that I'm with Dan on this. I live in Clay Township, but I believe that any more industrialization of agricultural lands in all of Township affects all of the county. And, and I agree with Dan that, that New Carlyle and all of Township have done their part. So I agree with him that we should not rezone the next 1,000 acres, and we need to rethink that a little bit. And the other thing I wanted to say is tonight, the county council's going to be talking about two bills, which I oppose. One is regulations for solar development that I think are unnecessary and burdensome and would prevent renewable energy in our county at the time when we have data centers that are going to be consuming enormous amounts of electricity. I believe in the New York Times article, they described it being equivalent to a million homes. So if we're going to talk about expanding data centers, we need to be thinking about better ways to, to create electricity. And as I, as I told you before, agro-voltaics are a really wonderful opportunity for farmers and these solar farms to work together. And finally, I oppose any changes to affirmative language, affirmative action language in our tax abatement ordinance. If companies do not want to have an affirmative action plan and, and, and work to hire qualified minorities and women and disabled people, they just don't have to apply for a tax abatement. I feel that I'm a person who benefited from affirmative action. I was able to go to college. I was able to get a good job. And Title IX, athletics for women, that was all part of affirmative action. I didn't benefit from it, but my daughter and my sister sure did. So hope for your support in opposing those two bills. Thank you.
Thank you for the comments. Anyone else online wish to offer a comment? Seeing none, I think we're at the point of recess. Do we have a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Mr. Morton?
Aye.
Mr. Hazen?
Aye.
Mr. Backsweyer?
Aye. Thank you, everyone.
Recording stopped.